I call this meeting of the Northeast Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, and the time is 5:31 PM. The Board will now convene, will now adjourn into executive session pursuant to the following sections of the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, to discuss personnel or to hear complaints against personnel, and the time is 5:31. The Board will now convene an open session, and the time is 6:00 PM. Item four matters from executive session, a personnel, including but not limited to administrative appointments pursuant to Government Code, Section 551.074. One possible action regarding routine personnel, including but not limited to administrative appointments. Do I have a motion to approve items A, B, and C as presented in executive session?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Shelton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Villarreal. Do I, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion passes six to zero. Item five, presentations. A campus consolidation update. Ms. Chancellor.
Mr. President, board members, Dr. Micah, executive staff, and guests, we do have an update this evening since the last time we updated you all, which was on May 12th. So since that time, from May 5th to May 21st, support was provided to take inventory over at Wilshire and also Clear Spring. On May 13th, staff walked Royal Ridge to understand the needs in welcoming new students to that campus. On May 14th, staff walked Driscoll for a second time in order to review specific spaces for a campus usage plan draft. On May 15th, procurement interviewed moving companies. On May 20th, staff walked Harris to understand the needs in welcoming new students to that campus. On May 22nd and May 23rd, inventory, an inventory audit took place at NEAC and at ACE. On May 27th, Driscoll had an inventory audit at that campus. May 27th through May 29th, packing, labeling, and coordination for receiving campus materials took place over at NEAC as well as ACE. On May 28th, HR met in person to communicate placements at Clear Spring. There were two employees there that received their placements. On May 28th, June 3rd, and June 4th, packing and labeling and coordinating occurred at Wilshire as well as at Clear Spring. On May 29th, HR met in person at Wilshire Elementary. One employee received their placement at that time. On June 3rd, staff walked Driscoll for a fourth time to review spaces for a campus usage plan draft. On June 5th, June 9th, and June 11th, packing, labeling, and the organization of campus materials was completed at ACE, at NEAC, and at Driscoll. On June 10th, special education reviewed transportation supplements so that they could ensure that the new campuses were appropriate to the students who were changing. They submitted that to transportation. Any remaining student-specific resources were moved to the receiving campuses. Transition ARDs were also completed at that time. 504 plans for receiving campuses were reviewed as well, and no new parent meeting request or calls for special education or Section 504 were received. On June 10th and 11th, move estimates were received, reviewed, and a vendor was selected. On June 12th, cabinet met to review all of the moving plans and to ask any questions that anyone had at that time. June 13th, a PO was issued and move dates were confirmed. The first moves will actually begin this Wednesday, June 18th. Pupil Personnel Services continues to work on school choice options. As a reminder, the students are at Driscoll, Clear Spring, and Wilshire, and then as well as rising sixth graders who were slated to go to Driscoll, those rising sixth graders are from Northern Hills, Redlin Oaks, Stoll, and Wetmore. These school choice applications do also include students who were already on school choice to one of those three consolidated campuses, so they'll need to go to a new location as well. As of last Wednesday, 318 applications have come in. 289 have already been approved, so the vast majority of those. Six are pending at this time. Pupil Personnel Services also continues to receive and respond to any parent calls or questions that may come in regarding the school choice process. And again, as of last Wednesday, we have received 10 emails and 18 calls. Those have been handled. And lastly, an update on employee placements this evening. As of June 16th, 173 placements have already been made. 22 resignations have been received, and three promotions have been given. So that is 100% complete as of this time, and we are all here to answer any questions that you may have over any of the information.
I just have a question. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we had, I'm really excited. This is, I love this format, by the way. This is great. I love it, love it, love it. Okay, we had 318 applications. What, can you remind me of the amount of students out of all the three schools? How many students were total? Did this affect?
Total of we've got?
Yeah, out of all the three schools that we had to, you know, sadly close.
I guess are you trying to get at what's the percentage of kids that have school choice?
Yeah, what's the percentage of retention versus those that just went to their school that was rezoned?
Suzie's gonna think, answer the total number.
It's about a thousand. I was just gonna text it. I'm sorry.
So we've only, we've only 318 out of the thousand?
Three, 318 that applied for school choice.
Choice, okay, but how many have signed up for their new schools that aren't doing the choice?
Ms. V, let me clarify something. That 318, is that kids that were rising from fifth to go to sixth? Is that 318 including that?
It's including, it's them, and it's concluding students that wanted to school choice to another school.
So do you see, it's, so when Ms. Lackhorn gave us the thousand, that 318 is also including any students at an elementary level that were rising?
Gotcha.
Up to go, so that, I'm not sure, so that number's going to be lower about really those impact of that thousand?
Correct.
Students? Do you follow me on that?
Out of the thousand students that are, were impacted?
Impacted, right.
That in school, 318 asked for school choice to go somewhere different than they were gonna go to.
Do we have a percentage of the children that we actually lost during this process that said they were not going to be coming back next year? Do we have any of those stats yet?
We didn't.
Okay.
But Ms., so Ms. V, a lot of times, we do projections and all sorts of things and try to figure out who's gonna go where. We'll know that in August, maybe September, we will be able to give you that final number, because then we can go back, look at who was, who's in and who isn't, and then be able to report that back to you.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thanks.
I have one question.
I have a couple of questions. On page two, we talk about the ARDs, and so, two questions. Have all of our parents received their initial, their ARD for the end of the year or their transition ARD?
Yes, all the parents have had their ARDs. If there's any changes to their ARD, they have their annual review. And so, as we do the consolidation, we make sure that that IEP and all their information goes to their new school, and then if they need a transition ARD from fifth to sixth grade or something like that, then they have an ARD for that as well. So that's a transition ARD.
Okay, and so, all those have happened for all of our children that are having to switch schools?
Yes, ma'am.
Correct? Okay. And then my second question is on page three. Between the 318 that apply for school choice and the 289 that are approved, six pending, that gives me a delta of 23. What's happening with those applications?
I don't know specifically each of those, but a lot of times with school choice, it may be that there was a programmatic placement.
Okay.
Or it was an issue where if a child went to a school, that would trigger an FTE in a grade level. So in other words, if we go over the 22 to 1, let's say in an elementary school, and we add another kiddo, that could trigger another, another teacher. So the cost of one kid going to this grade level would make us increase to one, a one FTE. So that may be a reason why that was not approved.
So we don't know if they were not approved, or they just haven't gone through the system yet? I would love to know if we're denying children?
We can find out.
Or, okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other question, Ms. Shelton? Are you good?
No, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Tidge?
So, great job, if I can find it, on the placement of teachers, but somewhere I saw that there were teachers that aren't placed, and are they, oh, last page. So, the 13% that had been placed, are they in the resignations or in the promotions? Or are they, they're still out there looking for jobs, or?
Ms. Tidge, where are you looking at? I just want to.
Well, it says as of June 16th, placements are 173, which is 87.37. So the other 13, are they included in the numbers below?
That is correct.
So everybody is placed at this point?
100% have been placed, or they were promoted to a different position, or they resigned, which also includes retirements within those resignations.
Retirements are within the 22?
With the resignations, yes, ma'am. Because you resigned from the district, but then you retire with TRS.
Okay, okay. Well, I just have to say, great job with that.
Related to that, did we have any feedback from any teachers that because of the consolidation resigned? Meaning, did we get any information? Because it'd be helpful to know that as well.
I do not have any communication that that's why a teacher resigned. We did have, that some of those that did have initial placements had an opportunity during the transfer window and did find other positions they were interested in. So that helped them if they didn't, again.
So they were potentially going to move, but then found something else?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Ms. Whitten, sorry, before you leave. So do we do exit interviews when people resign?
That is voluntary for individuals, yes. So when they resign, they have the opportunity through a link to submit that information.
Have we pulled any of that exit data to see what people are saying for these teachers from these three schools?
Not for the current school year. So we do have the penalty resignation deadline is June 27th. So at the conclusion of this fiscal year, June 30th, we'll be able to pull that data to see if we have any different responses from individuals.
That would be great to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions on the update? All right, I did have one that, yeah, go ahead. You may, you may have to answer here in a second. I think I, Ms. Shelton mentioned it last week, and in previous updates, I know we've talked to the public about plus or minus $5 million cost savings to the district.
Yes, sir.
See how we're, if we've been able to track some of that and where we.
We have, and right now, as we gather more information, we're looking at maybe 6 million, and that's growing. It could go up to 6.4. You know, when we first started and looked back months ago, we started like with a million a school, and we were at three, and then we went to five, we brought to y'all. But right now, we're looking at six to 6.4. But as things start finalizing, that number might go up, or there might be some expenditures that we didn't expect, but right now, we're looking at 6.4 for savings.
And I guess, to Ms. Caldwell, I know going through some of these walkthroughs, are we finding that our expenses for any kind of refurbished renovation to these facilities is in line with what we thought, or are we finding that we don't have to do as much as we thought we would have to do?
So as we're doing the walkthroughs to make sure that the building is ready, what we're identifying is things that honestly have already been submitted as work orders, or our routine maintenance that we are moving up in priority. It's the paint, it's the repair, the tile, it's those things that we are elevating so that the building is fresh and welcoming for these students. We're taking care of those work orders. There has been a little bit less than $10,000 of new items, as an example. There's a space at one of our campuses that we need to break up into two classrooms, so we're installing a wall there. That's not normal maintenance, that's because of consolidation. That's about a $530 expense. There's some additional cameras that have to be added, some additional proxy tags that have to be added, but all of that together so far that we've identified, Mr. Byer, is less than $10,000.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions before we move on? All right, well, thank you all very much for the update. Appreciate it again, and we'll get another one ideally in.
I would say we'll give it to you in August. Some of these things will get finalized. Ms. Shelton, some of, we'll have, be able to pull the data then from that. So some, some of those things, and then we'll start getting a firmer number as where we're sitting. So yeah, we'll give you one in August.
All right, thank you all very much. Item B, budget study session number three.
Yes, Mr. President. Members of the Board, Dr. Micah, executive staff and guests, I call on Suzie Lackhorn, our Executive Director of Finance and Accounting, to present our budget study session number three.
Welcome to our next-to-last budget meeting for '25-'26, with budget adoption scheduled for Thursday. You've already made it through three meetings. Tonight, we're gonna look at a detailed budget view through the, each of the funds and kind of recover some of the topics that we've already covered in preparation for Thursday night. We'll adopt Thursday night the actual budget, but we can't complete the tax rate adoption until August or September after TEA issues all their final requirements. Just to recap from our budget study session number one, just that reminder, as property values fluctuate, overall revenue doesn't fluctuate, the state just adjusts their contribution based off of what our property values are doing. Homeowners, even though we're capped at 2.5% of property value growth, that doesn't mean individual homeowners only see a 2.5% growth. Some will see 10%, some will see a decline. It'll vary. And on every one of these slides, it's kind of funny to see there are a lot of unanswered questions regarding the legislature. And even though we have concluded the legislative session, there will always be questions as we wait for TEA to roll out rules. So, from budget study session number two, a reminder that we're recommending no increase to employee and district contributions to health insurance. And then from 2A, which was last Monday, we're starting to see the first set of rules from TEA on House Bill 2. It really didn't change anything from, from what we have presented, but it is good to see them starting to issue some of that guidance. And just a reminder, we showed you forecast last week, and we really focused on what we think will actually end up at. This week, we're talking budget, and budget is going to be a bigger expenditure number because we budget for 100% fill rate, but we never have every position filled all year long. That would be miracle. And, and we also budget for everybody spending every penny of their budget, and as we all know, Dan never gets close to spending his budget, so. All right, so our agenda, we're gonna go through each of our three funds that we have to adopt. Debt service, no changes from last time. We bring in revenue from property taxes, the state provides some hold harmless from when they increased home set exemptions, we get a little bit of federal revenue for our QSCAB program. The other resources, this big number is related to that bond order you approved last week, where we're going to basically refinance some of our debt to save money. So a $412 million revenue budget, and then we'll pay off principal, interest, and then we'll do that refunding where we're refinancing our debt, so.
Ms., Ms. Lackhorn?
Yes, ma'am. Sorry, I had already switched the slide.
Okay. Mike, go, could you go back one? Okay, it matches.
And then one very important thing to note is we have to make sure that we have enough money to pay our August 1 debt service. So every time we, we make debt service payments, so principles and principal and interest on all of our issuances, August 1st and February 1st. And so, when you're collecting property taxes, we run July through June as our fiscal year, the taxes we collect in that timeframe have to pay for the next August debt service payment. So we always want to make sure that ending fund balance has enough to cover those things, that August debt service payment in 2027. It'll be a very happy day when we pay off our QSCAB payment. That's been funded by M&amp;O from 2010, when we issued debt to do those HBAC improvements back in the day, and so that'll be paid off soon, and then we'll still have plenty of fund balance in debt service. But again, it's still no changes from last time. School nutrition, we walked through a lot of that last week, 40 million in revenue. Most of the revenue, oh, this is expenditures, sorry, 40 million in expenditures, most of their expenditures are obviously in our functional category of food services, a little bit in facility maintenance, and a tiny bit in security. For a budget of 40 million, 40 million in revenue, 40 million in expenditures, basically bringing them back to break even. General fund, here we're gonna compare by different categories. So we're gonna look at the same expenditure budget in just different ways. Yes, ma'am?
So why? Oh, sorry. Why is there an increase if meals prices are going up?
Why is there an increase?
Can you go back to the previous slide, or to, there you go.
So that, this is just a budget, and so that's just, we're just basically building a break-in-even budget, and so the meal price increase will help offset the rising food cost and other things that we talked about last time. And so this is, when you're talking about $45,000 as your net increase.
I mean, I know that's not a lot, but.
It's basically break even, and so our, our budget and our projections are never perfect, and so, you know, this is about as close as we can bring in a break-even kind of budget. Okay. All right, so on the general fund, we're looking at a proposed budget of 625 million compared to 612 million. We walked through those changes last week. HB2 is being the primary driver of our changes in expenditures and our compensation plan. And as you can see, we're seeing a increase in salaries and benefits from 86.5% of our total budget to 87% of our total budget. The other ones are saying, sitting pretty similar. We tend to see these flips between contracted services and supplies and materials. Each year is kind of funny, as campuses and departments build their budget, one year they tend to put money in supplies, and another year, they put it in contracted services. Some of this in, switch in percentage is actually from where I put placeholders in the budget for some of our compliance with HB2 and some of those things. But as you can see, the rest of them are all staying kind of in line percentage-wise. The big driver, of course, is being the compensation plan as an increase to the '25-'26 budget. And that should, I've got it mislabeled there, that's the '25-'26 proposed budget.
And, and Ms. Lackhorn, just for purposes of the discussion, other uses, could you just outline a couple of those?
Yes, so other uses is, 2.3 million of that is our set aside for our QSCAB bonds that we were just talking about in debt service, that once again will go away August 1st, 2027. If anybody wants to meet me to celebrate that, I will be celebrating that. So that 2.3 million, we've been setting aside about that number every year since we issued those, and they're, they'll be gone pretty soon. Getting closer.
Thank you.
So now let's take a look as in our functional category grouping. So TEA requires that you adopt the budget, not by salaries, not by supplies, but by functional category. And they use a statewide account code. It's got 20 digits in it, so every district uses the same code. There's a lot of gray sometimes on how to code something, and every now and then you can see it in our numbers as we have a shift in how we're coding something, but it helps for comparability, and that's why when we talk about certain things, we can compare ourselves to our peers, is because TEA has mandated, we all code things the same, and they give a lot of guidance on that. One of the things that we like to see is at least 65% of our budget in instruction and instructional related, and you can see that that's actually growing some as the mandated raise for teachers, classroom teachers, is as higher percentage than what some of the rest of the budget increases are, and so you can see it's growing that instructional category, and that's where we want to see our dollars going, because that's the stuff that has the most direct impact to students. TEA used to monitor this as 65% and, and give points for that. They've walked away from that several years ago, but it's something we always keep in the back of our minds as we're building our budget and looking for that. But as you can see, the percentages stay pretty consistent.
Before you go on?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you remind us what student support services, administrative support, and non-student support are?
Sure. We're actually gonna walk through the detail of all these, but students.
Then just remind us then.
Well, okay. We're gonna get there in just a few slides. So this is the instruction and instruction-related. As you can see, instructions growing the most. Again, it's gonna come back to that compensation plan, so we're gonna have pay raises for teachers and other support staff, but we're also gonna have fewer of them. Library services will have an increase, do that pay raise, and then curriculum development and instructional staff development. This will be a combination, because this category is not as driven solely by staff. It includes a lot of training, and so depending on whether a campus was budgeting their budget in, for training, or some principals will put it in supplies and then move it to training, so we just take what their plan is at the beginning of the year, and then they can move it around as the year goes. And we definitely see it as we see new principals coming in, shifting of budgets and everything, and so some of this is related to those changes. Yes, ma'am?
So we're not losing headcount necessarily in those people who are helping and supporting the school?
It definitely will, will definitely have some changes in headcount, because we're consolidating three campuses, but it won't be, this decrease is not all due to changes in headcounts. Definitely some of that is planning. For '21 and '23, we almost have a flip here, and part of that is the way we built the budget last year. And so, when, when we're, when we're building the budget, we don't have one of those fancy systems that pushes everything out for us, we have spreadsheet. And, and last year, we had a little bit too many staff members in '23 instead of '21 when we built the budget, because we put it in the wrong spot, and so we're fixing that this year. You'll see that with me, and every now and then where we just use the wrong code for the, for that group. But some of this is also changing, again, where they're allocating their dollars. And so a lot of campuses default to putting it in '23. And again, we also have consolidation where we are losing staff in '23 specifically, because that's where the overhead for those campuses are. So now we're in the student support services section. This is guidance and counseling, so that's where your counselors, your school psychologists, CCMR specialists, your educational diagnosticians, all of those are in this function 31. We also pay for things like AP exams and those kinds of things out of this function. Social work services is a much smaller percentage of our total budget, you can see it's less than 1%. And then health services, school nurses in the clinic. And then health services, school nurses in the clinic here. And so, and as you can see, some of these negatives are really driven by our consolidation. Continuing on with more student support, transportation is pretty consistent from year to year. Food services, this is just a tiny piece, the bulk of food services is obviously in the school nutrition fund. So this is just for the handful of things that they're not allowed to pay for out of that federal fund. And then extracurricular, part of this here is again consolidation, as we will have fewer coaching stipends as we consolidate that middle school. Function 41 is administration, and this pretty much is a collection of almost anything else. So it's HR, finance, accounting and payroll, risk management, procurement, communications. It's almost central office, but not quite, because there are still a few other things in central office. But for the most part, we pay a lot of our legal bills out of this account, out of function 41, and as you can see, it's pretty flat here. One of the things that we've talked about in the past is our administrative cost ratio. And so I'll point out that function 41 is only 2.4% of our total budget. But TEA likes to evaluate not just 41, but also 21, which is instructional leadership. So instructional leadership, plus your general administration, becomes part of this formula called the administrative cost ratio. So we add those two pieces together, and we divide it by the total of functions 11, which is instruction, 12, which is library and instructional resources, 13, which is our curriculum and staff development, and 31, which is guidance and counseling. So we take those two numbers, and if your district is of our size, and you have a ratio below 8.5%, then you get all the points that, the max number of points on the financial integrity rating system of Texas. If districts that are smaller get points on a different scale, but districts of our size, this is the scale for that. And as you can see here, when we compare across our peers, these are all within the area. We always perform either in the top or the second best spot on our admin cost ratio. So this is our general administration, plus our instructional leadership, divided by the instruction and all those other functions added together. Yes, ma'am?
This is great job. I want to go back to something that's kind of nagging me, I think I know the answer on 41, the 15 million. That includes not just the people, but also like software as a service and everything that's in there.
Yes.
So just want to make sure everyone recognizes that this is not $15 million in people.
Right.
This is people and the equipment and the software and the.
Yeah, the, the paper we print our checks on has to be that special micro-written paper. It's, all the supplies, there's a lot of software in 41.
It's the gusto, it's the quick looks, it's the, all those things too, right?
Yep, definitely.
Okay.
All right, so anyway, so our admin cost ratio, something that TEA always monitors. 2023's is, they'll do an official thing later in the year about this ratio. 2024 numbers weren't out the last time I looked, and so I couldn't pull that number for y'all. But we'll see that in the fall, and we should see that TEA should release it by then. And then just a heads up for our first rating, which we bring to you every November, TEA is working on redefining that formula, so it's going to look a little different. And we're not going to be able to compare, we'll still be able to compare against other districts, but TEA really likes to tweak that formula. So the last I heard is that they're looking at taking it, and instead of dividing by functions 11, 12, 13, and 31, they're going to divide it by total expenditures. So shouldn't see too much of a significant change, but interesting that they're tweaking the calculation. Feels like every few years we see a new one.
So, so we won't be able to necessarily compare it to last year's or the prior years?
Right, and we can recalculate it once we know what the formula and how it's going to be used, so we can recalculate prior years. But the official one that you see in all their published documents will be, won't be apples and apples. All right, so then, non-student support, the next grouping is function 51, which is maintenance, warehousing, all of our property insurance and engineering departments are included in here. A big component here will be utility bills. And so that's definitely the biggest non-people expense we have in this, this group. So security and monitoring, that's our police department, and our campus safety specialists. Data processing is, of course, all of our technology, our management information systems, and our network, and our tech support staff, and their equipment supplies. Rest of our functions, community services is a small percentage of debt services. This is related to a GASB statement, and we haven't been including it in our adopted budget, because the expenditures are really somewhere else. But because this is going to be a consistent thing in the future, because of our new GASB expenses, or requirements, we went ahead and added it to the budget this year, so that we, we always have a placeholder, y'all get more comfortable seeing it. And it's not my favorite accounting standard. So GASB is our governmental accounting standards board, and basically if you have a software subscription, we have to depreciate it. And if you have a lease of almost any kind, we have to do the same thing. And we have to calculate implicit interest, a lot of fun accounting things involved in it. And so, but typically those things are already in the budget, they're just spent in a different function, and now we're just kind of breaking it out, so that it, that it shows up in the budget in the same place that it's going to end up in our actuals. So we're not spending on anything new or anything like that, it's just an accounting requirement.
So on, back a few slides, we had a, on the overall, that you don't have to go back to, but we did have a, a line item for capital outlay. That wouldn't fall under the facilities acquisition and construction line?
It typically, yes.
Okay.
But sometimes you have capital outlay for things that are not facilities acquisition. So you, a maintenance truck or a school bus would, like a school bus would be in the transportation function.
Okay.
So it would be capital, but transportation capital.
Okay, thanks.
So these are just some of our other function codes, the budgets pretty much stay the same year to year. Function 99 is what we have to pay to Bear Appraisal District for our fees for their services. They are not funded through the county's budget, they are funded through all the taxing entities that they appraise for. So now we've walked through all the functions, let's see where the money actually gets spent. So taking the same $625 million budget, we can look and see by location where we're budgeting the money. And we stay pretty consistent in these percentages, too. Schools, for things that we can directly allocate to schools, is over 80% of our budget. And again, that's what we want to see, we want to see our budget going to the places that have the most direct impact to students. That's why we look at that admin cost ratio, to make sure it's staying low. That's why we look for a function, our instructional expenditures to be 65% or more of our budget. We also want the amount of our budget going to schools to be the biggest part. Some of the things that we are not able to allocate would be transportation, we don't allocate maintenance, finance department doesn't get allocated to individual campuses. And we also have itinerant staff, such as speech pathologists and such, they travel multiple campuses, and so we don't allocate them, we keep them as a central office. But they are spending a lot of their time on campus. So as we break down that part of the budget that's at schools, you can see of the, Dr. Micah loves to, to, to run these percentages, but the, of the 80.6% of our budget that's at schools, 90% of that is in salaries and benefits. So as we have talked over and over and over again, we are heavy on staff, we are labor-intensive, that's where we are, we're service industry. Substitutes are 1.7% of that, services, 3%, utilities, 3.3%, supplies at 1.2. When we say travel here, this is primarily training. So when TEA requires, TEA requires us to book all of our conference fees and training documents to an account called travel. And it, it always cracks us up in accounting, because that's not what, we consider travel the in-between, but TEA requires us all to book it as travel. So that includes all those conference fees and trainings, and, and it also includes all the student travel, too. And so that's part of the campus budget, too. So when we break down that salary number, you can see teachers and aides, the staff that's in the classroom are by far the biggest piece of our campus, schools budget. The next piece, campus administration and the support staff, counselors, you can see those are the, the next biggest pieces. So for non-campus, we don't see quite as high of a percentage in salaries and benefits. So where on campus it was over 90%, this is only 64%. And, and as you'll find, central office departments tend to buy things for district-wide implementation. So there's a lot of software that you buy at the central office level, because no individual campus needs to buy our Google license or a Microsoft license. So that's done at the central office level. So it's not as high of a percentage in salaries and benefits, because of so much being purchased across the board for, for, for the, all the things that are uniform across the district. And then if we were to break it down, the non-campus costs by department, basically. And of our 121 million in non-campus budget, over 35 million is for transportation and maintenance. So two, nearly over 30%. So a third, nearly a third of that non-campus budget is for transportation and maintenance. Two departments that, even though you, we don't allocate them to the campuses, they have significant direct impact to our campuses. You can see our other departments, there's that tax appraisal and collection, that is the fees that we pay to the Bear County Appraisal District and the Bear County Tax Assessor Collector, which isn't as big as the appraisal district. And you can see we have the safety department now, that is where our safeties, campus safety specialists are. I always like to point out that the executive staff budget is not all salaries, just like your question earlier. Mr. Jimenez pays for a ton of student travel in his budget, and so big pieces of their budgets are included in here, that are not related to salaries. So it's, it's something very important to keep in mind, that that's not executive staff pay. Anyway, this slide stays pretty consistent every year, we're just kind of shifting, you know, a little bit back and forth, but the percentages and everything, transportation and maintenance have been about 30% of our overall budget for quite some time now.
How about, before we go to the general fund summary question, I guess this is pretty specific, related to athletics, fine arts, with some of the UIL realignments over the last couple of years, and I know with MacArthur being 5A, other schools getting aligned with schools where having to potentially travel more. How is that, do we have data that's shown over the last few years, how that may have either increased or had to decrease our budgets in those areas?
So actually last year when we went over ARs, we increased budget because of MacArthur needing to travel more and, and their distance. And so, yes, it definitely has impacted us. And it's tough to get buses for MacArthur, and so, because, you know, with the number of drivers that we have and the amount of time, you know, they have, they have to leave pretty early to get where they're going, because they're going pretty far now. And so that, it becomes a real struggle, so it's definitely been an impact.
Absolutely, and in fact, I just got a call last week about an RR for that, because of, again, travel, the way things work, to proactively get ready for this coming school year, ensure that there's enough money for those buses.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, I, obviously, I'm, I have my interest in MacArthur, but I know that there are, knowing that UIL is sort of the Wild West sometimes every couple of years, and with Ms. Shore having to get fine arts groups to, to travel around, I mean, it, it impacts every school, and those are things that are directly impacting our students and our families.
Yes, sir.
Even though it's a very small part of the budget, the overall budget, really like to make sure that we're.
And Ms. Shore and her team work really hard also to try to host events.
Yeah.
Instead of having to go somewhere, so, and a lot of, a lot of, you know, a lot of districts want to come here.
Yeah.
Because of how well we run them, so we really try to work on that, so that way we can lower that amount.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, Mr. Byer, that, that's something that I've had some of our folks echo to UIL, which is really starting as districts across the state are looking at cost-saving pieces, is to start looking at these things. Because sure, it's a small part of the budget, but as you all know, every penny matters. And so when we're looking at increasing these things, when potentially, maybe we don't, you didn't have to, but because of the way UIL drew lines, I think that's going to be something we need to champion a little bit more to start bringing more attention to it.
And I think everybody sees, you know, the football program, but there's academic UIL and, and others that, that get caught in the crossfire with a lot of this stuff, and so, and we have a huge percentage of kids that are participating in these things. And so being conscious of what we're allowed, what we can do for them and the families that are having to sometimes supplement the bill to make that happen is.
I noticed that, you know, we have kids that are going, you know, out of state and things like this, you know, which is a high honor for what they're doing. Who pays for that? Is that the school district, or, or is it just something that they put together, or?
It depends, it, it depends on which group it is and what they're doing. So some groups fundraise and, and will pay fees to, to, to travel to some of them. Some of those competitions are UIL-driven competitions, and so they're, well, that, that wouldn't be out of state, but, you know, some of the travel is done through Mr. Jimenez's budget. It, it just kind of depends on which one.
Usually when it's fine arts UIL, our fine arts department pays for all the registration fees for UIL. If certain groups want to have competitions that are outside of UIL, again, it's fundraising, possibly a little bit out of local, but mostly fundraising. Sometimes it's private pay also, that'll, that'll occur.
Is this something that we're going to have to worry about going forward, you know, that we won't be able to do, or is it something that we will continue to do?
When our kids are successful, they're, they're traveling and they're, they're competing somewhere else, so we're going to do our absolute best to ensure that they're taken care of and that they're able to compete at the highest levels.
And, and Ms. V, I can talk about bands, when they go up to Indianapolis to compete at BOA, the Nationals, they just don't do it every year. We, we've structured it in a way, because we are cognizant that parents are having to take things on. And so while some want to, it's like JROTC going over to Florida, we're actually looking at potentially getting it here in, in, in San Antonio, correct, Mr. Jimenez? So that national championship.
Quite possibly, yes, sir.
Quite possibly could be here. So we're always looking at ways to balance giving our kids great exposure, but also making certain that we're not overburning families, families, or fundraising, or, or any of these other matters. So we'll continue, and Ms. Shore and, and those folks, we'll continue to look at creative ways, as we always have, and figure out, you know, things to make it happen. But I know Ms. Shore, because she's sitting out there, is, is very on top of where they're going and where they're not, and making certain to say, that's too much, you're traveling too much, I think that's a burden on the family. But hey, let's pick certain events, and then let's make sure we do those and do them well.
Thank you.
So I'd like to talk about executive staff, that amount.
So I'd like to talk about executive staff, that amount. That's easy to criticize. Can you give us multiple examples of what that is besides a salary?
So, so like I said, Mr. Jimenez pays for student travel out of there. And it's a sizable bucket of his budget. Mr. Jarrett actually has quite a bit of, like each one, everybody but Dan, has, has money for, for other needs, basically. And so Ms. Caldwell has some funding for like emergency items that are, wouldn't be your typical maintenance kind of thing that come up. But she has a contingency built into her budget to help her pay for, for major repairs that are a little bit beyond the scope of what the maintenance budget and the campus budget would do. And so same thing with Mr. Jarrett. He funds some of the instructional subscriptions and things that, that are, that are in his budget. So definitely, they're paying for things that are district-wide, campus-related. But we like to manage them here at central office and with their oversight so that they can make those decisions for how best to spend those funds.
Thank you. I mean, I think it's clear why I want to bring that up. I think it's easy to criticize that amount of money. And I, I would love for the general public to know that a lot more is in that other than salaries. So thank you for clar-
Okay. So our general fund summary. We talked last week about House Bill 2 and the impact that that's going to have on revenue and expenditures. We actually spent some time looking back at our historical legislative bills that impacted salaries and such. And just a couple of interesting things to note. When, the last time we received a mandated pay raise was in 2019, and that was with House Bill 3, complete, structured completely different than what they're doing this time. It required that so much of our increase would go to teachers, nurses, librarians, and counselors. And then the last time that we had saw something like that was like 2009. And back then, it wasn't just teachers, nurses, librarians, and counselors. They also included speech paths back then. So you can definitely see, even though the state doesn't mandate pay raises all that often, but when they've done it, they've done it in different ways. And this was drastically different than what we'd seen in the past as it was specific to classroom teachers. And then they created another allotment for other support staff, right? And so they don't always prescribe the dollar amount, like they did for classroom teachers this time. They prescribed the dollar amount. In '09, they told you the total you had to spend on those groups. Kind of funny back then. They also mandated step increases and didn't provide any funding for it. It was kind of funny looking back through those presentations and it was like, oh, unfunded, unfunded. And so then in 2019, they did a percentage of the total. And then, of course, now we're seeing something completely different where they're prescribing a specific dollar amount. So it's been interesting to see how that has evolved. But as we talked last time, the increases in revenue, we're projecting now to end '24, '25, around 3.7 months. The budget, of course, is at 100% fill rate and spending everything. So it's got a higher amount for our expenditures. But then our forecasted results are slightly better, not slightly better, sorry, better because we wouldn't hire everybody all year long. Well, we'll be spending more than '24, '25 as we have the compensation plan driving the bulk of that. And still ending up on a projected basis over three months of fund balance, which is not where we thought we would be this time last year, in a good way.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, point of clarification. So it's not that, say, for example, librarians are no longer considered classroom teachers, that there's a difference between 2019 and HB this session.
Correct.
Because there were four categories before in HB 3 that got the pay raise.
Yep.
But this time it's just one category.
Correct.
So that's the difference between those two.
Yeah, they, they have, you can tell they've just been narrowing that scope, you know, because before it was the big five, and that included speech paths. And then, and then speech paths were excluded in 2019. And now, significant focus on classroom teachers. And I think you'll hear them say things about, you know, that they really are, with the teacher incentive allotment in 2019, they really are trying to drive people back into the classroom.
And so, Ms. Cox, to build on that, and Susie, I thank you for kind of going back in time. That's, I think, the, the big significant shift here that, that folks, I don't think really understood as negotiations were happening in Austin, what was really happening. In the past, because I've heard this for forever, the big four, teachers, nurses, librarians, and counselors, teachers, nurses, librarians, and counselors. We saw it in 2019, dictating how much money went there. So I think for a lot of folks out there, they think that big four still stands. House Bill 2 didn't do it. House Bill 2 said, hmm. And, and you know, if, if anybody was able to watch when House Bill 2 was signed into law, Governor Abbott was at a table. And the sign in front didn't say churches, teachers, nurses, librarians, and counselors. It said, teachers matter. He, it was very clear that those four didn't exist anymore. All right? The other thing that Ms. Lackhorn wasn't, but I happened to be in an event with, with quite a powerful person in Austin, let's just say that. And, you know, this was just among us friends, right? And said, the days of the basic allotment adjustment are over. That is so important for folks to understand. The basic allotment, Susie, jump in if you want, but that was really giving us, more importantly, you all, the flexibility to use this money the best way you saw fit. Those days are done. And you could see we got very little to the basic allotment. But whoa, where did this eight and a half billion dollar investment go? Into what they like to call buckets. Ms. Lackhorn likes to call them that too. Because it is dropping money into the safety allotment, which means you have to spend it in safety. You don't get discretion where it goes. So it's not like you can move that money over here and use it differently. It must be spent there. So you started to see them, those folks up in Austin, making a very large investment into education, but dictating to us where it goes. That's important, twofold with what is Susie saying. And Susie, jump in wherever you want. One is, I think we're going to see less and less flexibility at our level to make decisions about where we think money should and shouldn't be done. I think it'll be more prescribed to us. And two, I don't think we're going to see anything for a while. Because if history tells us anything, it's going to be a while before we see another. And again, we can just kind of scan the terrain and look at, what we're hearing is a historic investment in our schools, a historic investment in our schools. You know, I, again, in this room with somebody, they said the 90th legislative session will be about property tax reduction, and that's going to be its focus. Now, do they know it? I don't know. But that seems to be the sense and the vibe. So I say all of that because when we look at this forecast and look, y'all, I'm proud of this district. I'm proud of our boards. Because y'all, we've never, ever went into a deficit thinking that somebody was going to come to our rescue. You all, we all have had to make tough decisions and roll up our sleeves. And what we're seeing, because I mentioned earlier, Susie, you know, there's a reason the windows don't open here because some of us would jump out. Susie, at any given day, may jump out the window. It's why we don't allow her window to open.
I'm on the second floor, so there's a shorter bowl.
Because when she says, well, 3.2 is better because I just didn't think we'd get there. I need a Susie in my life who's, who never sees the good, right? Because she's, she's making sure that we're well thought through, that we're really thinking it. But because of the things that we're doing, folks like, that's a huge improvement. But there's still work to be done, right? But what we're seeing is the benefit. And, and I'm so proud of the district and the board for understanding that there's just, the rescue wasn't coming. So we've been doing the things that we've had to do. And look, I'm going to, do you mind if I hijack your meeting?
Please.
I'm sorry.
No, no.
You know, I like presenting with you.
It's teamwork. It's teamwork.
But I want, so, Mr. Byer, Jacob's not here, is he? No. But I asked him today because there's something in House Bill 2. So remember, House Bill 2 is 231 pages?
231.
Just a small bill, right? So we kind of keep finding, what do they call them? Easter eggs, right? We find Easter eggs. They're not good. But look, on page 204, just listen to the wording. And, and folks, what we just went through, and you just got a report this evening about consolidation, I think you're going to be able to know this and see where it's going. So on page 204 of House Bill 2, it states, Section 70611, Facility Usage Report. In this section, instructional facility has the meaning. So, "The agency by rule shall require each school district to annually report the following information in the form and manner prescribed by the agency. One, the square footage of each school district facility and the acreage of land on which the facility sits. Two, the total student capacity for each instructional facility or on a district campus. Three, for each campus in the school district, A, the enrollment capacity of the campus and of each grade level offered at the campus, and B, the number of students currently enrolled at the campus in each grade level offered at the campus. Four, whether a school district facility is used by one or more campuses, and the campus identifier of each campus that uses a facility. Five, what each school district facility is used for." And then they will post it. What do you think they're looking for? What they're looking for is our efficiency. There it is. Like, they've now placed it into writing. Congratulations, folks. You all were ahead of this one. Like, good job. You were. Because this is, we're going to report this every single year to the agency. What I worry about is how this data gets used. You know, but you can clearly see, if you use what I like to say is the scout's mindset and scan the terrain to see what we need to see, not what we want to see, you can kind of see some things moving in a direction, which is why I need a Susie in my life, but we also need some optimism too. Right, Susie?
Hey, 3.2.
So I, I just, you, you kind of have to, and as again, we keep unpacking this very large bill, waiting for rules to come out in things. But again, we've approached this always from the onset when we took on this debt. We knew a way out of it. And we agreed. In fact, Julie Shore will attest to it. I called the entire cabinet into this room before we did it. And I talked to them about can we do this collectively? And are we ready to do it? Right, Ms. Shore? And we agreed to it that day, did we not? Because I said, this isn't a me thing. This is an us thing, and we're going to all have to work together to get there. That's the impact of that 18. It ain't me, and it's not Susie, and it's not, it's all of them, working very hard every day to do it. There's still work to go, right? And we know that the flexibility that we've enjoyed as school districts for a long time is phasing out. So we're having to recalibrate and readjust. But we're in a position, we're not going to survive this. That is not my goal, folks. We are going to thrive in this industry. We are. It's going to hurt. It always does. But we are going to figure out a way to thrive in this new era. Because I believe in this district and I believe in the people that work in it. I do. Okay, sorry, Susie.
Yes, ma'am.
Now that I hate.
Ms. Villarreal, I think Ms. Chigi actually had a question.
I'm so sorry.
And then we'll get to you.
Okay.
So I guess this, sorry, Susie, is for Dr. Micah.
Sure.
Who gets to go, or has to go, or chooses to go to represent us in Austin? And I really appreciate that. I'm trying to wrap my head around, I think I'm quoting you, Ms. Villarreal. What is the thinking to give raises only to teachers? Now, please know, I value teachers very, very much. But as a former teacher, I know I could not work in isolation without support staff. It feels like they don't understand that. It feels like they don't know how valuable a librarian, or a counselor, or a nurse, or a bus driver, or their principal. It, it feels like they don't care about them. And help, help me to answer the questions that we're getting from those people who, quite honestly, don't pay attention to what's going on in Austin. And now, they're hurt. They're deeply hurt by the, the decisions that were made in Austin.
Yeah. So, Ms. Chigi, I mean, ultimately, I don't know that anybody sat down and said, here specifically, what I can do is, again, scan the terrain, kind of draw some conclusions, right? And listen to what the commissioner has been talking about really for two years. And has talked to all sorts of different entities about it. They, research clearly shows, and I know this even 30 years ago, or 31 years ago when I began, right? The single most important factor in a child's life is the quality of teacher in the classroom. What they get frustrated at is that teachers, great teachers, leave teaching and go into administration or something else because of money, because of pay. And they do not want, whether it's to a librarian or an instructional coach, they want to keep the very best teachers in that classroom. And so the way that they believe this is by giving them a salary that will keep them from pursuing an administration or some other part that you know still is needed in the system, right? But they want to keep those teachers in that classroom. So I, look, there's some truth in that. And I, and I will tell you because I am that guy. I knew even in 1995, when I crossed Lakeland Elementary's threshold, you know, folks, back then I made 20, 24, 5. That was my pay. Even back then, I was young, naive, and quite frankly, didn't understand a lot of things about the world. But I knew there was no way I could ever retire with that. And the only way for me to get a better salary was to leave that classroom. Yet every principal I ever taught, or worked under always said, oh my God, don't leave teaching. But I knew it. There was no way I could make it happen. They believed that that will, so I left and went on to do, you know, pursue administration and such. But they want to keep that classroom teacher in that classroom. They believe this way that they've structured, structured it is part, I wouldn't say is the answer, but is part of the answer. And so rather than dispersing it among folks like we've done in the past, they have prioritized it here. That's what the legislators did. And look, teachers deserve a great raise. They do.
But Dr. Micah, if the priority is the teachers, which I agree with Ms. Chigi, right? And we want our teachers to stay in the classroom, and our teachers can't work in isolation, how do we not think forward to say, I've got to not only give the increase to the teacher, but also to the paraprofessional, also to the librarian, also to the editorial staff, also to the bus driver? Because without those wraparound people, the teacher can't do his or her job. So like, I hear what you're saying. I just-
You're asking me to answer a question for an entity that I can't answer it for? Like, I, I didn't make that decision, Ms. Shelton, right? I can tell you that their argument back would be that they did create the ABC allotment, right? That gave minimal dollars. I think what they saw, this is a guess. I cannot speak for the legislature. I can't. All right? But I think what they said is, look, we have this many dollars. How are we going to use it? Because if we take it and try to do as you and Ms. Chigi are saying, I think in a case, they're like, that dilutes it too much, and I don't think we're going to get where we're trying to get. By make, because their goal is to give teachers a six-figure- trying to get by make, because their goal is to give teachers a six-figure salary. That's it. To get teachers to a six-figure salary. That's why you see this large investment to teachers and doubling down into the teacher incentive allotment. So when you combine those two things, yeah, there are some, if you're teaching at certain schools and meet certain criteria, you can get pretty darn close to that here in Northeast. Some districts across the state you can. But yes, I, Ms. Shelton, I agree with you. There are other folks, like, look, um, when I got this proposal, Susie and Jacob, and they worked very hard to propose back to say, what about all these other people? That was our response back. Because we ask doesn't always mean we get. And look, um, just for history, 'cause I don't know how much you all followed it, you know, Dan and I were talking about it, and Dan's gonna hate this story, 'cause he always hates when I tell it. But in twenty nineteen, I was becoming superintendent, right, Dan?
I'm so sorry.
Right, Dan?
Sir. Yes, that is correct.
Come on, Dan, I need you to engage with me in this.
Twenty nineteen, you started, yes, sir.
And you were, you and Susie and I were starting to prepare the budget in March, weren't we?
Yes, sir.
Right. And at that time, what bill was it, Ms. Lackhorn?
HB three.
Three.
HB three. And we talk about that as just all of this money, right? We, and people look back, it's like, Ms. Caldwell says this, do people have amnesia? Are they forgetting some things? Mr. Villarreal, in March of that year, when we were sitting in your office, Susie, you were there, I have a witness, what did you tell me I would be with the hot passage of HB three?
I think I started with that you're so good-looking.
Except, that's not...
That's not what I said.
No, sir. What did you tell me then?
Uh, a wash?
In? That's what he told me.
But...
That, he goes, oh my gosh, you are coming into the superintendency at a perfect time. You're going to be a wash in cash. Now, I, we, we, he hates that he said it, but that's okay. Because how much money were, was the original bill actually going to, our estimates provide Northeast, Susie?
I wanna say it was something like forty-something million.
I think it was forty-two mil.
Correct. It was forty-two million. Susie, what did we end up getting?
Twenty-seven.
Seven.
Seven.
Dollars?
Million.
A million.
But, but see, people look back and say, well, oh, we got all this, that was supposed to be forty-two million. And then politics entered the equation, things happened, and it materialized, and then Dan was incorrect.
That's correct.
Why he hasn't put his budget?
That, that's right. 'Cause he's trying to get me to be a wash in cash. But I say that because, what, I say that, Michelle, because this isn't unusual to see some things like this play themselves out. It's just that people didn't, I think people thought, um, certain things were gonna work out the way they always had, and things shifted. And it shifted in a direction that some folks didn't think would happen, and it did. And now people are starting to wake up a little bit to what's coming. Like, look, I, I will tell you all, and I've said individually to you one or the other, before this session began, they're not coming to our rescue. Like, you've got to understand this, right? I have some superintendent colleagues that are now just wrapping their heads around, they're not coming to our rescue. Like, oh my gosh, this legislative session passed, I've gotta deal with my deficit. Because there was a belief that we were going to see some of what we had seen in years past, because the House's version actually did similar to what the twenty-nineteen pay increase did. But once both chambers got together, it didn't look like that anymore. Do you see? And, and so, like, look, I'm, I'm, I'm glad, like, I'm truly happy for our teachers for, for getting the kind of money that they did. And I would also say, no, all hope's not lost, because in two years, we're gonna come back again, right? But I think the, the thing becomes about how we articulate those needs, Ms. Chigi? How we quantify them, how we value them? Because I will tell you what I've heard, true or not, I don't know yet, but that, that some folks want education from the custodian all the way through to be on a merit-based pay system. Everybody. Now, I think we're a ways away from that, but if you look at what we're doing with teachers, it's kinda where we're heading. It's merit-based, that's TE, that's TA. So, our, and when you look at some districts that are actually going to start piloting things like this, I would say that's probably where they're trying to go. So there's more change coming. Um, how we navigate it, how we thrive in it, there's opportunities, right? But we're just gonna have to be smart about it.
Well, and now, the competing interests of siphoning off, I'm not saying a billion dollars is all gonna go to public education, but, um, not even having that money potentially available to school districts for, um, divvying amongst the eleven-hundred school districts in the state.
You mean the billion for ESAs? Remember, that goes to four billion.
Correct.
It grows pretty rapidly.
Um, so unfortunately, we can't pay our politicians like some other entities can, so, um, unfortunately, we're, uh, we're stuck behind a rock and a hard place, as they say. Ms. Villarreal, do you have a question?
Well, brilliant, Ms. Shelton and Ms. Chigi actually asked the question that I was going to ask, but, okay, I'm hoping you can make me feel better, I, about this three-point-two. This is, um, we have a three-point-two, you know, month, you know, excess. If we are running our entire budget with everything thrown in but the kitchen sink, essentially, but it's actually better than this if we don't have a lot of the, you know, positions in place, or is this minus the positions, or what is this?
So the, the column next to it, that has proposed budget, that is, if we hired everybody, they were here all year long, and we spent every penny.
Okay.
What, what we're modeling that will actually come in at?
Oh, okay, so you just burst my bubble, 'cause I was just hoping that it was gonna be...
I'm, I'm sorry. But, but sometimes, you know, remember, there are a million assumptions in this three-point-two, okay? So it assumes a certain amount of enrollment loss.
No, you just burst my, you burst my bubble. That, I got it. Bubble burst.
But we're still...
And it's all Dan's fault.
Just, just, but we're still often conservative in this number. Just, just so you know, we're often conservative in this number. For twenty-four, twenty-five, when we were at this point last year, that twenty-seven-point-eight was about forty million. And so the things that we've done all year long, having better enrollment than what we projected, had a significant impact to those forecasted results. And so, again, we try to be conservative when we do these numbers, and sometimes it drives certain superintendents a little crazy, but...
Because he does his own numbers.
But, but the reality is, you know, we tried to live in that environment of what can we survive? And, and, you know, to be prepared for the worst-case kinda area, scenario and such. And so, um, that three-point-two is almost a full month more than what a year ago we thought we were looking at.
Okay, Dan, you did really well.
No, thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Susie.
Thank you, Susie, we appreciate it.
Quick, I do have, getting back to the general front summary, um, is there a reason for the budgeted versus forecasted dip in revenue? It's only twenty thousand dollars.
So, I...
I was curious, that's a very specific...
I Goopern this up every year, and every year, one of you brilliant people actually notice it. And so the TRS...
Thank you, you've answered the question.
Yeah.
Well, it, it seemed like a very small amount.
Is a tiny change in our TRS on behalf contribution from the state. And so, um, uh, we, we match it up in the proposed budget, and so it, it, it is slightly higher than our forecasted results. Um, and so it really is just, um, adjusting one revenue number where the state, we have to book an entry that says, even though the state doesn't give us any money for it, the state contributes their portion of TRS straight to TRS.
Right.
And so, but we have to book it as if they did. And so we have a matching number of revenue and expenditures. And so it's slightly different in the budget than it is in my forecast.
Okay.
And that's the difference between the two. And every year, I tell myself, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna fix it so that that doesn't jump out at people. And every year, I just keep running my spreadsheets the same way. And, and so, yeah, I'm, it's very good that y'all are paying attention.
Got it. The other question I have is, I know last week, was the last week we discussed, um, we have that eighteen million dollar change or deficit forecasted.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that does not factor in a potential retention supplement?
No, it does.
Oh, it does? I thought last week it was eighteen, and then it was gonna be on top of the eighteen.
It's included there.
Okay.
And, again, that forecast actually will change five hundred times between now and July fourth, you know, but...
Absolutely.
But with what we have at the time, this is roughly, and it includes it.
Okay, I misunderstood last week, where I thought it was gonna be eighteen plus, so it would be closer to twenty, but that...
It's the compensation plan that we'll be presenting after this, it's very reflective of it.
Okay, sorry, reflective. And then I guess the, um, any guidance that came out over the last, I think it was like week from TA didn't move the needle anywhere significantly?
The only thing they did that helped us in any way was explain how they're going to monitor us complying with the raise requirement. And so they explained, and, and honestly, it's exactly what we expected it to be. They're gonna leverage the PMS data collection to, um, figure out who is a classroom teacher. And so it didn't surprise us at all. Um, it's what everybody expected, but it is good that they came out with it now, because...
Right.
You just don't know, you know, Dr. Micah brought up the capacity information that we're now gonna have to submit. We're seeing a lot of things that TA wants to collect, and, and some of that's embedded in HB two, some of it's in other bills. And so, um, the more data you have to submit, the more margin of error you have. And so it was somewhat good news that they're gonna leverage the existing PMS data to, to help them with that. And so, that's the only clarifications we, we've gotten so far, but there'll be a lot coming.
Susie, I just have a question, and I don't know, um, in the PMS coding, are you, can you be a counselor, teacher, or a librarian teacher, or you can only be one of the four?
So if you are teaching a portion of the day, in theory, you can be a portion of one role ID, which is what those codes are called, and another one, and so they'll just break it by percentages?
Do we have campuses where they're duly coded?
Between two role IDs, we have some. More commonly, we see people who are split between campuses, but we definitely have some people who have more than one role ID.
Okay. So along those lines, when I think of that, I think of deans and instructional coaches and so forth. How are they coded?
Um, so, in theory, as I am not actively involved on either side of, you know, either building it or reporting it, uh, I believe deans are part teacher and then part instructional coach.
Come on, come on up, Ms. White.
Yes, so within Skyward, where they have the teachers and their schedule, those examples of an instructional dean, they're split between two role IDs. And so as defined by TA, they have a role ID of a dean or a coach, and then the other is an O eight-seven, which is a teacher. Again, based on the percentage of time they serve in each of those roles.
So if they taught the, I thought it was four classes, but it's not...
Four hours.
Four hours.
Hours. They could qualify for the money, but really, I think their role as a dean or an instructional coach would be lost. But those kinds of things can take place, right?
Correct.
Okay. And even, even a librarian...
Yes, that's right.
...often helps in the morning, helps some throughout the day with tutoring and so forth, but it has to be four hours. What does it have to be?
Four hours each day.
It has to average four hours.
Average four hours each day.
What, when, when librarians are teaching, when...
They teach all day.
They were, they, you bring a class, they teach the class. Is that not them teaching for the hour? Could that...
As far as the way they're reported, they currently have a role ID of one-one-three, so it's how, again, within PMS, their schedule is within the system. So they have to be designated in that role as a teacher.
So, so Ms. Shelton, to that, to that end, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, I think I know where y'all are kinda leaning, is we're still waiting on some guidance from TA as to some of these things, all right? Because again, a whole bunch of bills just passed, and I wish Jacob were here tonight, 'cause I can't even remember how many hundreds just passed that are gonna touch us in some manner, right? What we're waiting is for some of that direction from them as to, because I think, or what I predict is, people are going to try to use the four hour to start coding people, to give them access to money that it was never intended to. And I will just tell you what history tells us, every time a district decides to start playing games like that, um, the next legislative session, you get more rules, because they get very frustrated in it. So, right now, that's what it is. If we get more guidance from TA about how to change things or to do, and what we think as an entity counts, doesn't matter, 'cause ultimately, they're gonna tell us what counts. Because if we impose our own thinking and we're wrong, Susie, they make us repay it, correct?
Oh, yeah.
All the time.
Quick.
And so we have to make certain that we play within whatever their guidelines are, but, you know, look, could, and Mr. Jarrett and I, and Anthony, and Shyla, and Dan and Susie, we all were talking this morning, because, you know, one of the things as well, if, um, I'll just use librarians, if, if they were part of the specials rotation at an elementary school, um, and they were teaching four hours, remember, it's not periods, it's, it's hours. If they taught four hours, I, we're thinking maybe that counts as teaching. So now, well, they're in the rotation, because a music teacher's counting as a teacher, PE teacher's counting as a teacher. So if you built that in like that, because right now, Ms. Shelton, when they teach, it is, I would, I don't wanna use, I don't know what the right word is to use, but it's not built in a schedule. I mean, I know they make classroom schedules and things like that, right? But it's not to the teaching level that they're looking at. I think if it was built in every day, and you could show it and demonstrate it, I, my wonder, and I know Ms. Witten's, we're waiting on that guidance, is, does that count? Does that mean that they then get access to that, to that allotment? And, and then, look, y'all, I wanna, I'm gonna be the doom and gloom, Susie, for a bit.
You wanna wear the Susie hat?
I do. Because I, I just, look, you know, what's interesting about what they did with this for us, twenty-five-hundred and five thousand, is they built a separate allotment for it. Well, that's it for a minute. They built a separate allotment. So it didn't really roll in like we typically see it. Allotments come, and allotments go. Right, Ms. Lackhorn?
It's very easy to strike code for a whole section like that. And it's, can just be, repeal this section, and it can all just go away.
Correct. So, so, you know, do I think, is that what they're doing? I'm not saying that, but it, it just, those are the little things that you gotta pay attention to, you know? My mom always used to say, the devil's in the details. She's right. It always is down and deep, right, in that fine print. Like, it is intriguing, like, so it's an allotment. Is that gonna, like, they're saying it's there forever, but we've seen allotments come and go all the time.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
Can I ask a question? What happens if an allotment goes away? Do we, do we then absorb that extra, you know, five thousand, and, or is it just disappear?
That would be up for us to decide. So, years ago, in twenty-nineteen, they, they did a lot of shifting with allotments in twenty-nineteen. One of the allotments, um, and maybe I have my year wrong, but, but they got rid of the gifted and talented allotment. And so, they got rid of it. And they actually came back and added it back in. And so, in a, in a future legislative session. But, but they told us at that point in time, we're no longer giving you this money specific to gifted and talented, but your requirements... but your requirements for meeting gifted and talented spending is still there. You still have to provide the service, but we're no longer giving you specific funding for it. And they did that at a moment in time, this is why Dr. Micah was talking about in twenty nineteen, we thought we were gonna get a much bigger bucket of money than we did, is because they were giving us money from other allotments and other avenues. And so they said, you'll just use some of that money to keep paying for the gifted and talented. Now, we spend more in gifted and talented than what our allotment generates. And so we just, I mean, it just stayed in our budget and we kept going. But one of, because they also required us to keep doing it. But if they re, strike the allotment and the requirements to spend it, then you have to make that decision whether or not you absorb it or you move on. Now, they have shown that they've added back that allotment after, you know, parents complained and voices were heard. And so we got it back later on. It's interesting, and we don't know.
Miss Villarreal, you don't have the money to keep it. Like, there it is.
Yeah.
If, if they did away with it tomorrow, correct, Mr. Vill, I mean, there's no way we could keep it.
No.
So that, that's why I bring that up, is it's an allotment. Allotments come and go. So, um, if I were Batman, I think they're gonna start watching data. Because I will tell you, I, I see it all the time, where they're constantly collecting data and using it to tell a story. And I think what they're gonna look at is, okay, we've made this huge historic investment into classrooms. Are, are accountability results going up or not? And I think that is what I would venture as a guess. If accountability goes up, they're gonna say, well, our investment, our return on our investments working. If they don't change, I think there's going to be a different story to be told. That's rubbing my crystal ball, that's, that's what I think. Now, I could be wrong, but I don't think so, because I think they're looking at what moves the needle.
Feels like they want us to fail.
It does.
So I have a,
It absolutely does.
That wasn't a question, I apologize.
No, but I will tell you, in the back of my mind, a year ago, I had a conversation with an outgoing state rep, and I asked him, what, what is everybody, what, what is happening? What are they doing? And he looked me dead in the face and said, they're just trying to kill public education, is what he said. And we don't have lobbyists that can pay to grease the palms of some people. So we're gonna do what we can to help the people that we need to help. And it's not gonna be what everybody wants, and it's not gonna be what we want necessarily, but it's gonna be what balances, again, taking it back to students, staff, stakeholders, and stewardship. And so we have to look at those four things, balance them, um, knowing that I can't take a wad full of cash in a suitcase and, and give it to somebody to take a vote on something. And so, um, no, well, actually, I think we're legally not allowed to lobby anymore, so.
Well, um, that's actually incorrect.
Okay.
So,
Glad to hear that.
that did not pass a piece on taxpayer-funded lobbying, but there are rumblings, and I really encourage you all to stay off of X, just as a rabbit hole. But, um, over the weekend, Governor Abbott alluded, um, to a special, a potential special session. Whispering is that exact thing, that it will include ending taxpayer-funded lobbying. And that's just not school districts, that's City of Windcrest. It's all these public entities out there. So it would have a very drastic impact on a lot of systems.
And I know we can't sit back and say, woe is us, but at the same time, it is not helpful to any of us, so we do what we can. So sorry, we got a little off track, but it is related, and I think it's important for people to hear this, because outside of us just purposefully failing and driving this deficit even further for people to wake up and see that we're hurting, there's not much else we can do other than try to take care of people that we have and move on to the next year, you know? And see what's coming down, down the road that might hit us like a bulldozer, so. Anyway, any other questions or comments?
Comment. I just need the message to be out there. This board is thrilled that teachers are gonna get pay raises. But this board, I've heard each of you, I mean, we, we want to give everybody one, and the state has tied our hands. And so I hope that the librarians and the counselors and the nurses and the bus drivers and the principals and the paras and so forth know that we do care about them and we would like to give them raises, but our hands are very tied. And so if you don't like it, I think you need to vote differently.
So our next steps, um, in, in just a few minutes, we'll have the compensation plan up, but Thursday, we'll have our public hearing. And we'll bring to you for your approval the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, um, the final budget amendment for twenty-four, twenty-five, and fund balance commitments, which is just an accounting procedure. Then probably in September, sometimes it, it happens in August, uh, the tax rate adoption, but that, we're dependent upon TA. Once certified property values come out, we submit those to them, and then they do the math, and then they tell us what our M and O tax rate can be. So we'll do that after we get that information from them. And that's the end of the presentation. Are there any lingering questions?
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Cox, did you have one, or are you saving it for the next?
No, I don't have one. I just wanna, I just wanna ditto what Ms. Chidji said, that it's not an easy decision to make, and like she said, that it's, it's important that people understand that in a lot of ways, our, the district's hands are tied. It's not that the intent and the care and the concern and the knowing of the need is not there, but it's kind of the hard part of the job, I guess. Thank you.
But, but look, and, and Ms. Chidji, I think it was you that said, you know, people aren't seeing some of this. I, I think if, if I could tell people one thing, it's to pay attention. Pay attention. Decisions are being made up there. Things are being done. And, and, and I think oftentimes, because we're disengaged and not paying attention, things that happen that we don't like happen. Um, and I'm not saying get involved and it's gonna change, and that, look, I go up there and ask for lots of things, I don't get it. But you know, I've always said, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. So I'd like to be at the table and at least be having the conversation, um, because it's important. And so it would be really easy for me to sit here and not go to Austin and, and talk, but it's too important to go up there and to engage. And sometimes I have to hear things I don't like. Sometimes I have to agree with things that, well, they're right on, but other times, then I get to express some things that they're incorrect on. And always looking for what Ms. Caldwell and I did in the eighty-ninth, eighty-eighth, points of convergence. Let's start from a place we can agree and work our way out, because if we just go up there yelling, eventually, folks, when you get yelled at all the time, you don't listen anymore. So it's always best to go up there from a place of, I can agree with you here. Now let's work our way out from there. And, 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 look, um, it, in some ways, this procession was productive for some of the things we were pushing. Other things it wasn't. But again, we got some money, but I didn't end up awash in cash, like, that happens to be politics. But there's always the ninetieth and the ninety-first, and that's how you have to look at it.
Be hopeful, Ms. Cox.
No other question or comments, Ms. Lockhorn, thank you again for another rousing addition of budget studies, rousing. All right, uh, move on. Item six, new business for possible board action, A, instruction and campus administration, one, possible action regarding proposed compensation plan for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Mr. Jimenez?
President Byer, members of the board, Dr. Micah, executive staff and guests, Shyla Witten will be handling this agenda item.
I'm sorry, we did have one person to sign up to speak before we jump into this, thank you. Ms., Ms. Thompson will call your name or number and then be the timekeeper.
Number one, and only.
Finally, finally, number one. Hi, I'm Patzi Estreline, Northeast A F T president, representing teachers and support personnel. With HB two, employee compensation became complicated. While the legislature provided twenty-five hundred dollars for classroom teachers with three to four years of experience, and five thousand dollars for those with five or more years of experience, it's requiring the district to provide for teachers with zero to two years of experience. After defining teachers, those teaching four hours or more, many employees are being left out whose pay is based off of the teacher pay scale. Will counselors, instructional coaches, nurses, librarians, and other professionals not considered teachers by HB two only be getting a one percent increase? If so, they will be losing large amounts of pay compared to classroom teachers. Those employees also do not qualify for the teacher incentive allotment, another loss in pay. Will counselors, librarians, instructional coaches, and others now be going back to the classroom to receive the pay they deserve, leaving personnel shortages behind? Also, the pay raises for paraprofessionals and auxiliary personnel has to be more than one percent. Support personnel are a critical part of the educational team. In their various roles, they support the teachers and the students. All paraprofessional and auxiliary job families have been in need of raises for many years. Regardless, this year must have a good pay raise for all pay families. NEISD cannot let professionals, paraprofessionals, or auxiliary personnel leave for better economic opportunities. To do so would be a disservice to our students. Our students deserve the best, and that means keeping and attracting the best personnel. Because I guarantee you, in South Sand, that superintendent is determined to be the best-paying school district, come hell or high water. So don't let him go to South Sand, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Jimenez or Ms. Witten?
Good evening. Tonight, we present for your consideration and approval, the compensation plan for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. The compensation plan has three major components, a general pay increase, a retention supplement, and the teacher incentive allotment. Due to the complex layers of the pay increase proposal, I will present the four employee categories separately. Category one, in accordance with House Bill Two, for returning classroom teachers who meet the definition under Teacher Education Code and have earned a credible year, we recommend the following pay increase. Three to four years of credible experience, twenty-five hundred dollars annually. Five-plus years of credible experience, five thousand dollars annually. In addition, the administration recommends providing an increase for returning classroom teachers with one to two years of credible experience with an annual increase of one thousand and fifteen hundred dollars respectively. For classroom teachers hired for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year with zero years of experience, we recommend increasing the starting pay to fifty-seven, five hundred. Although classroom teachers with zero to two years of credible experience are not identified in HB two, these recommended increases will align with the district's balanced scorecard, key action two point one A, to try to remain competitive with the starting salaries of surrounding Bear County ISDs and will support efforts to avoid compression. Additionally, we recommend setting the maximum pay for new-to-the-district classroom teachers with twenty-five years or more experience at seventy thousand, seven hundred. Category two, for any employee who is,
Can I stop you, Ms. Witten? I'm so sorry. You keep saying annually. Are we saying that each year, we're gonna give them an incremental one thousand dollars, or are we adjusting their annual pay?
Adjusting the annual pay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Category two, for any employee who is currently paid on the teacher pay scale who does not meet the Texas Education Code definition of a classroom teacher, we propose providing a one percent general pay increase equaling six hundred and fifteen dollars. Category three, for classified hourly employees, this is auxiliary and paraprofessionals, we propose a minimum one percent general pay increase based on the midpoint of the new twenty twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-six pay scales with targeted adjustments for identified positions, including but not limited to bus assistants, bus drivers, custodians, special education assistants, and instructional assistants. These targeted adjustments are recommended to better align with the current market for similar positions in Bear County school districts. The fourth and last category, for all other eligible professionals and administrators, provide a one percent general pay increase based on the midpoint of the new twenty-five, twenty twenty-six pay scales. The second part of the compensation plan is the retention supplement. The administration of NEISD has determined funds are available to provide identified NEISD employees with a one-time retention supplement for the first semester of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. In order to qualify, employees must have a hire date on or before October first, twenty twenty-five, and be in a position that was eligible only for the one percent pay increase. If approved, qualified employees, including kin assistants, would receive a retention supplement of one and a half percent of the annualized pay grade midpoint under the employees' applicable twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six salary range with a minimum supplement of three hundred and seventy-five dollars. The implemented supplement will be paid in November, twenty twenty-five, and would be conditioned upon the qualified employee being employed through the last day of the twenty twenty-five fall semester in good standing. Please note, classroom teachers and employees receiving greater than a one percent general pay increase for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year, as well as temporary employees and substitute employees, are not eligible for the supplement. The final part of the compensation plan is the teacher incentive allotment, or TIA. In accordance with the teacher incentive allotment approved under House Bill Three, our district receives additional state funding for each designated teacher employed. For any funds received by NEISD for a designated teacher under TIA, ninety percent of the allotment will be spent on teacher compensation and other student instructional staff at the campus where the designated teacher works. The remaining ten percent will be used for costs as permitted by the Texas Education Agency. Should our district receive funding for a designated teacher who resigns or retires, our district will forward payment to the resigned or retired teacher if the teacher fulfills his or her work schedule for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. In summary, the proposed compensation plan for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year serves to provide eligible employees with a salary increase, to provide a one-time retention supplement in November for employees who are receiving only a one percent general pay increase, and to utilize teacher incentive allotment funds received for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Witten. Y'all have seen the compensation proposal. Do we have any questions or comments?
Just one. Under TIA, it says, for any funds received by NEISD for a designated teacher, and ninety percent will be spent on teacher compensation. And that ninety percent, teachers, that cluster, they decided, is that the ninety percent that they decided how it will be spent, distributed? Yes.
So when we presented our plan under the teacher incentive allotment, we actually asked our teachers to vote on that ninety percent and how it would be designated the campus where the teacher works. And they voted that they would share ten percent of that ninety percent with support staff. And so that is how our plan is presently designed.
Thank you.
And, and so I thought the ten percent that you were referencing was what they were sharing with support staff. What are, then what is the use for cost permitted by TA?
So TA allows the district to use ten percent of the hundred percent to help, um, fund what we need for TRS, because that actually is part of what's covered, and also just for helping to increase the number of teachers that we are gonna designate under the teacher incentive allotment. Because when,
So Ms. Shelton, what, when, when teachers receive more compensation, they have to pay more into TRS, the teacher retirement system. So that ten percent helps offset that cost of, um, those occurrences to the district?
It's offsetting our part of the TRS, not their part of the TRS.
So TIA gets a hundred percent, right? Comes in, and so that's why it's written into law that you can hold back as a district and no more than ten percent to help you, because as more and more teachers, so part of the new legislation added a fourth category to TIA, which according to the agency, fifty percent of teachers will now be in one of those classifications across the state. As money increases, you have to continue, As money increases, you have to continue paying on behalf of the employee TRS fees. So we're taking that 10% to offset. Otherwise, we start running more of a deficit because of it. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
It does.
Is that right, Suzy?
Good job.
So I thought some of it went to support staff also.
And then of that 90%, the teachers voted to give 10% of that 90% to the support staff at that campus, okay?
So that's above-
So the 10% is for TRS and for the support staff?
No.
No.
Two 10s. So 10% goes to TRS, those fees, 10%, another 10% goes to-
To support staff.
-support staff, leaving the teacher 80% of that incentive. Correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But it says 90%. And is that on top of any money that, so let's say that I am Ms. Chigi's support person, so of her 90 cents, I'm gonna get a dime, and that math might not be right. But you were gonna give me a dime too, aligned with Section Two, your professional associate, where I got an incremental 1%. So am I only gonna get the dime from Ms. Chigi, from my, the piece of her teacher allotment, or am I also gonna get the dime that you would have given me had Ms. Chigi not had the teacher allotment?
Can you repeat your question?
Am I gonna get 20 cents or 10?
Suzy, do you want? Come on, Suzy. Suzy's chopped and pitched, let's come back to her. Come on, Suzy.
I missed y'all.
You've missed us, so come on and have a seat. Stay here.
So the raise happens whether or not, oh, am I still, okay, good, you can hear me. The raise happens whether or not TIA exists or not. And so you're gonna get that dime from that 1%, no matter what. And then if you get the TIA, in addition to that, it'll be on top of it. So it'll be 20 if you get both, depending on what those numbers really are. But yes, but in your example, you would get 20, and you would get your raise, and so TIA is wholly outside of our compensation plan related to HB2 and everything we're talking about.
Okay. Ms. Cox?
I just have a question about kin. Is this, so this is, is this new? Do they not, have they not normally or in the past gotten the?
They have in the past received the retention. We do specifically identify them because they're classified as temporary employees, and all of their temps are excluded.
Oh, I see. So you can be a temporary, you can be a substitute, or you can be a kin?
Yes, and because kin are regularly scheduled to work, that is why we include them, even though they're, again, classified as temp, and that's only because they work less than 20 hours a week that they're defined as temporary.
Thank you.
But along the kin, I thought, it's not in my paper, but I thought I heard you say, you said 1% first paragraph, second paragraph's 1%, and then you said 1.5% tied to kin.
That's for the retention supplement.
Which is one time in November.
Correct. That it will be 1.5%.
And they won't get a raise, or they will get a raise on top of that?
They will get a raise separately on top of that.
Okay. All right. And then if I could just go back to the first page?
Yes.
So it says that an employee paid on the teacher pay scale that doesn't qualify is gonna be given a 1% pay increase equalling $615. So everyone has the exact same pay, and we know that 1% is 615 for everybody, or is that an average?
It's on the midpoint of that teacher's salary, because all of our salary ranges have a min, mid, and max, and that's based on the midpoint. It's 1% of the annualized midpoint, based on a 10-month schedule for those on that salary schedule.
So if I'm at the bottom of the pay range, then I'm not getting 615?
You are. Everyone is getting 615.
So the minimum I'm gonna get is 615, but if I'm at the top of the pay range, I can get more than 615?
No.
So it's not necessarily 1%?
It's 1% of the midpoint.
I'm sorry. Okay, it just clicked. Got it.
Sorry, thank you.
One of the questions that we, I'm sorry, was anybody else?
No.
Okay. One of the things that, I think it was, Patsy, I don't know your last name, I don't wanna call you by your first name. One of the things that Patsy said, I can't find my paper with your last name.
Esterline.
As Ms. Esterline said, was, she made the point that we don't wanna lose our staff, right? And we don't wanna lose our staff because we think they're exceptional. What would be helpful for me is to understand where we are compared to other districts. You do a good job of kinda giving us that information, and I, I know what that looks like for our senior staff, because I asked for that information recently, so I know that we're kinda below market for our executive staff. Thank you for your service. But for our, our teachers and our paras and all of those, where do we fall compared to everyone else? And how do these raises help us either get better aligned or surpass where other people are?
So that is part of what we look at when we look at our comprehensive market study. So I know in the previous presentation, Ms. Lachhorn did share where we fell for a certain number of groups that we are targeting, so she was able to show where we rank. As far as for teachers, in this current year, for the starting pay, we're ranking at number five out of the nine districts that we looked at. So really, though, what that translates to is the difference in those entries is about $4,000. So our entry pay for our teachers compared to the number one district currently is $4,000 difference in the entry.
We're five out of how many districts?
Out of nine.
So we're right in the middle.
Right in the middle. And as you get to different points in the years of experience, our, you know, rank will differ. We go down a little further in the higher end currently.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, does that include, is that just salary, or does that include benefits?
That is just base pay, 10 months.
Right. And that's a great thing, Ms. Cox, that you brought up, because again, you know, we talk about this every year, and I've done this several times at convocations where I explain things. When you factor in benefits, that is where you start to see, and that's what I like about what we do here, is we talk complete compensation. What a lot of times, in fact, Mr. Jarrett and I were talking about it today, I won't say where it was, but he said, yeah, sometimes you'd get a 3% raise, but then once benefits changed, it ended up being 1.5%, right? When we talk compensation, we look at the entirety with our benefits and our compensation combined. The most drastic example I can give you, because it's one of our comparables that we use for pay, Ms. Shelton, is we still have a 90-10 plan in our healthcare. Okay? That's unheard of. I think most of you know that. Like, you do not find a 90-10 plan, but we still have it. If you are on there with a family and your spouse, so everybody's on there, it's 910 a month, correct, Suzy? Okay. A former district that I worked in, I would be on an 80-20 at 2,100 a month. Yes, ma'am. Correct. So that's the thing, is that, and when I know Ms. Whitten and her staff go out, we focus a lot on that, because you really do, and I will tell you, that's not uncommon, and I've seen it year over years, somebody has left, gone to a district thinking, hey, I'm gonna make more money, or I'm gonna save money, and we see them the next year, and I'm like, hey, what are you doing back? And they're like, well, so I didn't make money. I actually lost, because benefits kicked in and some other factors that they weren't considering. Salary, as you all well know, is just one facet of your compensation.
Ms. Villarreal, do you have a question?
They answer, you guys just keep preempting me. You're asking questions, and it's, and-
Perfect, thank you.
All right. Any others? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Whitten, for the presentation.
Thank you.
Seeing that, do I have a motion? Oh, I lost my page.
I do have one more question.
Oh, yes.
I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
Ms. Lachhorn? If we give more than a 1% raise, don't give me that face.
I'm just already trying to do math.
What does it do to our adopted budget deficit? If we give 1.5, I know you've run these numbers already, 1.5 or 2% to the folks that don't get what the state's gonna give?
Is this always on, or is there a button?
The year's-
Okay, okay. I'm used to being over here. So roughly, because this is a complex plan, the groups getting 1%, because we really are targeting a lot of groups, there are a lot of groups that are getting more than 1%, would cost about, that 1% is about a million. So if you were to, you could just use that as your guideline, so expanding to 1.5 would be half a million, expanding to 2 would double that to 2 million.
So what I hear you saying is, if we give a 1% raise, and I'm looking for my budget sheet that you gave us, then our deficit is, was it 27?
It would increase by another million.
To 28?
Mm-hmm.
27 is the 24-25 number. We're projecting 18 for our loss in 25-26.
But I'm approving, I'm not approving 18, I'm approving something different.
Yes, so the budget there is 40-something million?
So it's 42, so then becomes 42 million, projected out 26-27, it's-
So that's the, when you give a raise, it's the gift that keeps on giving, so you will compound that going forward.
So it's more than 40, it's more than 48 in 26-27, it's probably 52, or something like that, right? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, do I have a motion to approve compensation plan for the 2025-2026 school year?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Villarreal, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say nay. Motion passes six to zero. All right, item number seven, adjournment, and the time is 8:01 PM. Thank you all.